Ethics committed to order. Will the minute taker please take the roll call?
Eugene here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Absent.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Tismarski.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Randy, please.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Here.
All right, enough, we've got enough here for a quorum. We're starting the meeting. I'd like an approval of the minutes of the meeting.
The move.
Twenty second.
Second.
Any questions? Ayes, ayes in favor?
Ayes.
Opposed? That's fine. All right, we're going to start this evening with the chief giving a ten-minute presentation.
Oh, I'm out of here.
Ten minutes, ten minutes. And then we'll open it up to some questions we're going to allow so that everyone could get their words in. One question, one follow-up, then I'm going to move it to the next alderman. Not to say we won't do round two. All right, chief, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know in your packet there was a lot of supporting documentation, so this is just trying to summarize the stuff that was outlined in your packet. So, kind of going to break down tonight into four parts. One is the background of why we're here talking about this, outlining what's in our current ordinance, looking at possible additions to the ordinance, and then talking about compliance mechanisms. So that's kind of the four things where I was going to touch on tonight. So as background, at one of the January committee meetings, we were asked to put, looking at ethics and additional revisions to the city code regarding ethics. So staff has been working on it since then to look at options, and what we've looked at is current city ordinance, state law, City of Wooddale Personnel Manual, and other discussions that had come up in the past for possible inclusion in the ordinance. So, our current ordinance, it's titled the State Employees and Elected Officials Ethics Act. It was enacted in 2004, and that was based on a state mandate that all cities had to pass an ordinance regarding that. It kind of covered a lot of things, but it covered prohibiting political work during compensated time, which of course would apply to employees of the city. And then it bans acceptance of gifts from prohibited sources, with some few exceptions for when you can accept gifts from prohibited sources. I won't read all of the prohibited sources. This is in your background packet material, but it's basically anyone that would benefit from an action by an elected official or from a employee, that they could be prohibited sources of gifts to both elected officials and employees, but there are exemptions to those. And those exemptions are if the opportunity is open to the public, or if something was offered to, say, me, and I paid fair market value for it. Lawful election contributions are exempted. Activities associated with the fundraising event, let's say someone provided a meal. Educational materials and missions. Travel expenses to a meeting to discuss things. Obviously, gifts from relatives, should they live in the city and they're relative of yours, it wouldn't ban any gifts from that. Personal friendships. And there is some further delineation on personal friendships that they were in effect and, you know, not created just for, to receive benefit based on an employee or an elected official's position. Food refreshments, which is up to $75 a day. Food refreshments and lodging from outside business activities, so if someone has a business, you know, they could still lawfully make money from their business. Governments, or intergovernmental gifts, so if the Park District chose to maybe provide some type of benefit to elected officials or employees, that was considered an intergovernmental gift, that would be allowed. Obviously, inheritances are allowed, or any other item that totals less than 100 a year. And each of these things are mutually exclusive, meaning each one of them applies separately, so it's not like you combine all of them and say whether there's a violation, these are all stand on their own. So, back in 2004, when the city did enact the ordinance, which was done by law, as I mentioned, the Attorney General had actually recommended, in their model ordinance, that cities enact two other parts to the ordinance, which was having an ethics advisor and also having an ethics commission that would handle enforcement with it. We'll kind of talk about the compliance a little bit later into it, but that was, in the current ordinance, none of those things are provided for. So some other possible additions, in addition to the ordinance that I just laid out, come from the City of Wooddale Personnel Manual. As you guys might remember, in 2017, council reaffirmed the city manual and the city policy regarding sexual harassment and other forms of harassment, and that was pursuant to state law that required that councils affirm that the city has adequate policies to cover that. And that covers a number of topics. So it covers sexual harassment, and those definitions are taken directly from EEOC and the Illinois Department of Human Rights. It covers non-sexual harassment, which is any harassment based on, you can read them, but, you know, basically, race, religion, sex, national origin, and some other criteria that it would fit under. Personnel Manual also prohibits bullying, which is identified as unwarranted or invalid criticism. It doesn't say no criticism, but unwarranted or invalid, blame without any justification, being treated differently than the rest of the group, being sworn at, exclusion or social isolation, or being shouted at or humiliated. So that's what's covered under the current City of Wooddale Personnel Manual, and applies to the employees. Personnel Manual also has a procedure for making complaints and filing complaints. The city has a standing harassment review board that they have used in the past, and that's created up, made up of different personnel from different departments within the city. So they conduct the investigation, and they also work in conjunction with the labor attorney to make sure that they're following the right guidelines. And then they make an eventual recommendation to the city manager for any action that would be taken if someone was in violation of that policy. Recently, the supervisors just underwent another two to three hours of training. All supervisors within the city underwent that training, and employees are actually, while most of them have received some training on this in the past, there's another training session coming up, I believe, starting next week, that all employees in the city are going to be going to, and that's about one and a half to two hours for employees. So some other possible additions to the current ordinance that had come up, these had come up about five years ago, and I'll lay those out, what those were. And those were the avoidance of appearance of conflict of interest regarding immediate family, partner, and interest, friend, or regular acquaintance. So basically, you know, not taking action on something that would benefit someone that we're directly involved in. It would, it does allow for action, you know, that may benefit someone that you know of, as long as there's disclosure of that, and I think we talk about that a little bit later. Confidentiality, just, there's certain things from executive session or other items that can be kept confidential, and this would say that, you know, there's no disclosure of confidential packet materials or executive session discussions unless pursuant to law. And as I mentioned, these are brief breakdowns of the supporting material that's in your packet of the original explanations that were provided by the city attorney. Decorum, just general decorum in city meetings and discussion, the avoidance of ad hominem attacks, sarcastic comments, shouting, other verbal, or other disruptive behavior, and complying with the mayor's call to order during a meeting. Council member public comment and action, this would be, you know, everyone recognizing that council does act as a collective body, and they don't have any legal authority to determine policy or give direction directly to staff, except as allowed by law. And, you know, if someone had a personal opinion of something, they just can't represent that they speak for the entire council without the council actually voting as a body. In the first part regarding council members' representation, the avoiding of making public promises or statements regarding their votes on an issue prior to the actual vote at a council meeting, so. And then supportive council actions, and the wording that's included in there is, you know, while everyone's not going to agree on every action by council, and certainly, everyone would certainly have the ability to disagree, the decision of the council should be respected by council members, so. And the final thing that was outlined in the past as a possible inclusion into the ordinance was just a reminder that the city does operate under a managerial form of government that's by statute, and it attempts to not muddy the waters when it comes to dictating hiring or, you know, hiring of employees, directing inquiries, you know, to the city manager, and not directing city staff specifically of what they should be doing. No threats or implications of retaliation, and then no participation in city staff meetings, or a quasi-judicial proceeding such as making comment as a council member in certain situations, such as a recommending body that would be taking action that would eventually come to council. So those are things, go ahead. So. So, as I mentioned before, that's just a brief summary of the supporting stuff that's in your packet. There's more descriptions to a lot of it, but really, right now, the compliance with the current ordinance, violations could be referred to the state's attorney's office if there's obviously an ethics law violation, if people are accepting gifts that they're not supposed to. Obviously, anything that would come under a bribe or anything, whether it be an employee or an elected official, would be covered under state statute. But there's a reference in our current code to what's called a quasi-criminal offense by an attorney designated by the city through an administrative procedure. So it's really not well-defined as far as what type of compliance there would be there outside of the normal criminal penalties. All those violations we talked about, if it involves an employee, it can involve everything up to and including termination. Violations by council members right now, as I mentioned, could be referred to the state's attorney for criminal violations, and of course, council members do have an ability to do a censure resolution if someone's acting outside of the, you know, the ethical guidelines. As I mentioned before, when the council passed the current ordinance in 2004, they didn't implement an ethics advisor position. I don't know why, I don't know what the discussion was back then, but this would basically be an outside person that would allow someone who may maybe has something coming before council, you know, an elected official or an employee, to be able to contact someone and say, hey, is this ethically okay for me to do? We had a little bit of talk with the city attorney, and while he could probably fulfill the role, there was some discussion that we really should have, if council wants to do this, someone that's not at all connected with the city. And the city attorney may have a little bit further on that, but someone who maybe has been involved in the judicial process but has no connections to Wooddale whatsoever, that people would feel comfortable contacting them, and obviously, there would probably be a fee for something like that, but I don't see it as a, as a, something that would be used, you know, certainly every week, or get out of hands. So even if council doesn't want to change any compliance procedures in the current ordinance, staff thinks that this might be a position that you do want to implement, that would allow anyone to bounce any questions off of, as an independent body to say, hey, are we okay doing it this way? So there is the possibility to add an ethics advisor. The other compliance options is, as I mentioned, some towns have implemented an ethics commission. And those ethics commissions, the makeup is determined by city council. What a lot of councils have set their ordinance up to be is it's a independent board that is appointed of residents by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. So that's how some do it. If there's, if that's not a direction that council wants to go, we've also discussed, if you wanted to have some other mechanisms in place, you could implement the ethics advisor position. Do regular training on this. So maybe every two years after an election, you would train on the Ethics Act and any other additions that you would want to put in there. If there's any criminal violations, those would still go to the state's attorney, and council could still use their power of censure and/or public comment if they felt someone was acting outside of that. So I know that's a lot, and I know there was a lot of supporting information, but we have the city attorney here tonight, too, to be able to address any of these questions, and if council wants to enact any of this stuff or add any of these things, then we would work with the city attorney to drop the appropriate ordinance.
Thank you, chief. A lot of work went into their presentation. I know all the councilmen up here this evening are almost to the point of burnout, since it's been a rather long evening, but Alderman Messina, you had a question previously?
Yeah, I, please go back a few slides, please.
I know which one you're looking for.
There was something to the fact that if I forward to a committee meeting, I wouldn't be able to.
City staff meetings are referred to.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Brown, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, what that is, is if you're going to be a finer fact in your capacity as a city council, you shouldn't be going to a committee meeting, you shouldn't be going somewhere and talking about it and revealing what your position is on an issue prior to the facts being brought to you. So it show, you know, it would tend to show that you didn't consider the facts, you already, you came in with a preconceived determination, so that's what's prohibited.
Just so I have an example, if, you know, I was at the building and zoning meeting, it was a public hearing a few weeks ago. I should not make a.
I was at the public zoning, public building and zoning meeting a few weeks ago on this topic, and in that case, I should not make comment theoretically, or have my position, or state my position to that committee.
Not theoretically, you should not.
Okay. And I did not, for the record, but just so I'm clear, because if the mayor had not been there, I may have, and then that's just ignorance, and goes back to your ethics advisor.
And that's one of the things, I think, you know, the chief and manager and staff and I have talked about it, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, you do OMA training every two years, and you do other things, and just for that very reason, because you may not be familiar with all of these different nuances, and they're in various parts of the code and various parts of state statute, some of which are referred to in the code as, you know, by reference, but are not reiterated, otherwise your code would grow significantly. So, you know, that's one of the things you may want to consider is having a, you know, every two years, go through a certification, we have to be, you go through the training and indicate that you've done that, you know, consistent with, you know, either reelection terms after the swearing-in, certification of results and swearing-in, or something of that nature.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
One follow-up, one question.
Yeah, just one follow-up. Is this something we could do electronically? I mean, I know in the corporate world, we sign, we do something similar, where it's something similar where we do that electronically, it's a course for an hour, and then we sign off on it?
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, that's, you'd have to be put together, because there's not one in existence now, but yeah, that's very simple to do.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be doing it, but it's simpler for me to tell somebody how to do it. I mean, we've had the questions so far, but somebody would actually put together the electronic program that you could then go through, you could pause, you could do it, much like your OMA, you've all gone through the Open Meetings Act training, it'd be very similar to that, could be done.
No follow-up?
Let me get the other people first, then we'll go around the horn again. Mayor, do you have a comment?
I have a couple.
One question, one follow, then we go around again.
Okay, no problem. Regarding the ethics commission, I know in 2004, they didn't put one in. I saw a problem with that right away, because you're asking me to go out and find three residents who doesn't know the council. Come on. That, we're asking, we're going to put people on the spot. Honestly, if you were telling me, I was asking Mr. Brown, he said, well, maybe sometimes you get a retired judge or somebody to be the judge and the jury on this. Residents, I think we're asking for trouble. I don't want this to become political, or somebody's going to say, well, of course, he knows them, he knows, I mean, how many of you get stopped in the jewel? Right? So, I don't see this as a good thing, and hopefully, that's not what the council's leaning towards.
Chief?
And the reason that was brought up as a possibility is that was back in, well, it currently still is at the Attorney General, but their official, their original recommendation was for these ordinances to include that, but it's not a mandatory thing, and if council feels they have the adequate, some type of either review committee or an ethics advisor that might solve some of these problems, you don't have to do it, it's just, it was part of a recommended ordinance that the Illinois Attorney General had come up when these were being passed.
Do I get a follow?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. So, bottom line, even if we go to, if we hire a judge or outside attorney firm, sorry, Pat, the, even if they recommend, okay, that, yes, it was harassment, yes, it was bullying or whatever, it's going to come to the council, and the only thing we can really do is censure. Is that correct?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, the Attorney Generals opine and the courts have done, there's, a Park District actually removed someone from office, a Park District Board, and that was overturned because the court said the only people that have the right to remove elected officials are those who put you here, and that's the voters, so, or the state's attorney, if you commit a crime, he has the authority to, you know, seek your removal from the office. But yeah, the censure is the, is that, and, you know, in this council's history, no one presently sitting at the dais, but that did happen on a couple of occasions. But, and, you know, and a censure is, is a public scolding without the flogging, essentially, you know, it's a slap on the wrist publicly, and there's no, no further consequences that, and there's no further authority that the council has to do anything, such as prevent them from attending meetings or participating in, in executive sessions or anything of that nature. The Attorney General, going back to Roland Burris's office, and it's been consistent with every Attorney General since, has come to that conclusion.
Any more questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, chief, where would the whistleblower protection, where would that be addressed in the ordinance?
Well, no, and certainly, if you wanted to add that as a reference, but that's a, that's a state law. If we wanted to make that clear as being a part of this, you could certainly add, you know, whistleblower and definition, and references to the Illinois compiled statutes as to who's covered and who's protected by that, too.
Yeah, can we add that in then?
Yeah, and what I would look at to, I would go over the current city manual, because there is a thing about retaliation, but we would make sure that any whistleblower provisions would be included, too, so.
Thank you.
Nothing there, okay. Mayor?
I thought we had a policy for whistleblower, or was it an ordinance? It was done, right, but why wouldn't that be, that's why we're rewriting this code, so we put all this stuff in one section.
Correct.
We have.
And there is a protection against retaliation, and we should probably, we could probably make that a little bit stronger by referencing the Whistleblower Act, too, but there is a protection against retaliation in the current Personnel Manual for that.
Follow?
I've got another question, but.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
What, what was on the other policy, the other policy, I read the other policy. What's changing drastically here? Pat?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Well, I think what it's done is you had things in the Personnel Manual, you had an ethics ordinance, it was modeled after the State Gift Ban Act, and it was in various locations. There's references to Alderman Catalano, there's references to, you know, compliance with state and federal law, which is the Whistleblower Act, you've got a state and a federal whistleblower act. So the, the goal was to, and bullying didn't exist when this was, and to, I'm not saying bullying didn't exist, it's been existing since guys were bigger than other guys, I guess, but the, that wasn't, that wasn't a, that wasn't, the parlance wasn't there. So what the goal was, is to assemble this into one place, so people could look at it, and you could know exactly what was prohibited, and be able to conform that, as opposed to, you know, see also this policy and see also this section. So just to synthesize it into one document and update it with some of the things, such as bullying, that didn't previously exist.
Follow?
Yep. So bullying could be a lot of things. Could be, I mean, the way you talk, how a person talks, or how they talk to someone, that could be bullying. We could have, we could have city staff, or any, a city alderman could say, a resident could say, he's bullying me. Those things still apply for us, because we are employees of the city. Where would those complaints go to if someone was bullying? To the city manager?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it would depend on who the, if it's an employee, that would go to the city manager. If it's a, if it's an elected official, that would, that complaint would presumably go to the mayor. If you had, if you believed there was a need at that point to send it elsewhere, you can proceed with the, with administrative adjudication, you can take it to the state's attorney to determine whether or not it was a violation of the law. So there are, there are avenues for that to be investigated and for action to be taken.
So, you didn't answer my, he didn't finish answering my question.
Pat, answer his question.
Is bullying a tone of voice?
Well, and I think you had a definition in your slides, did you not, chief, of bullying? I don't know if you can get back to it, but it's got.
Direct from the Personnel Manual, it's listed as unwarranted or invalid criticism, blame without factual justification, being treated differently than the rest of your work group, being sworn at, exclusion or social isolation, and being shouted at or humiliated. That's from the Personnel Manual that's currently in effect at the city.
Mr. Brown?
And the courts have, have taken, as you've probably seen in the news, courts have taken, you know, interpretations of what that means. So to answer your question as best I can is, yeah, a loud, aggressive tone of voice has been determined to be bullying. You know, confronting someone has, has been determined to be bullying. So, you know, it's a different landscape that exists now than what it existed in the past, and so, you know, it's really some unwarranted conduct that is, you know, if you think about it, is not appropriate under that setting. So if you're, you're demanding documents, if your city manager sends something to one of his employees and says, I need this by tomorrow, well, that's a demand, but he did it in such a way. If he ran into their office and pushed everything off their desk and said, this is the priority, get this now, that would be the, looking for the same thing, that is, get the report now, but by doing the second one, that could be considered bullying where the first one would.
I would never do that.
So you can still be demanding, not that the city manager's ever done that, but, but you can still be demanding, but it's when it becomes that unwarranted, and that's really the key, the phrase that the courts have looked at, is it, you know, because there is warranting, you know, you can say, I need to get this, and that's warranted, because there's, action has to be taken. Unwarranted is some of the other ways of doing it, whether it's aggressive nature, screaming at someone, or getting in their face, and the courts have said, that's unwarranted, that's not necessary in order to accomplish whatever the objective is.
Forget it.
Forget all that?
Yeah.
Alderman Jacob?
We kind of talked about this several years ago, and I'm not sure why we were even talking about this. I mean, I read through some of this, I mean, basically, if we did this, Alderman, you couldn't go to a fundraiser for all their elected officials, you might as well disband the Addison Township Republican and Democratic Organization, it says you can't go to them if you're an elected. There's all kinds of stuff in here that just is incorrect. I mean, I'm not even sure why we're talking about this whole thing.
Well, no, it, no, that's, that's the law, and you can, in fact, go to those. There's a, there's an exception, and I don't know if you can scroll back to that, but under the act, there's, there's certain, there's certain prohibited conduct, and there's conduct that's exempted from that. One of the exemptions. that's exempted from that, and one of the exemptions is lawful election activities, and that is attending fundraisers, that, what's unlawful is if you were a city employee and you went to the, during city hours, while you're being compensated by the city, you went to the Addison Township golf outing, that is prohibited, but as an elected official, you are authorized under the Illinois Election Code to engage in political activities, you simply can't do it on the dime of the taxpayers, so you can't do it with government resources, that's why you can't use the photocopy machine at City Hall, that's why you can't post things on that beautiful board we have out, out in front of City Hall, you can't use that because those are paid for by city funds. Other political activities, you can engage in, you can participate in, you can go to the fundraisers of, of state, local, federal legislator, legislators who you want, you can participate in causes, you just can't use city funds to do it, so it's, it's, those specifically are recognized exemptions to the prohibited conduct under the act, and that's the law, what's, what the chief has, has referenced, those are, those are specifically what the law prohibits and what the law, what's exempted from those prohibitions.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Jacob?
Well, I guess, and maybe I'm misreading this, but it says prohibited political activity, soliciting contributions, planning public opinion polls, surveying or gathering information, assisting at the polls on Election Day, soliciting votes on behalf of a candidate, that's saying prohibited political activity, I mean, maybe I'm misreading something.
Chief, would you address that?
That, those are specifically covered under compensated time, those, those are violations under compensated time, a little bit higher up in the, in the actual, that's the state law, it's during compensated time.
Not us.
Right, you're not a, you're not a employee on compensated time, so that doesn't, that doesn't apply to you, this applies to, and again, it was the, the, the state, designed for state employees, they extended, expanded it to local employees, but that is if you are being paid, that's where I went, you go back to what I said before, and that is, you know, being, you know, you're on, you're on your shift, and you happen to be over there working the, the polls on Election Day, on behalf of a candidate or a party as a poll watcher, while the residents of the city of Wooddale are paying for that, that's prohibited, specifically prohibited, it's actually a Class A misdemeanor if you engage in that conduct. You're not a compensated employee, so you're not, you're not on compensated time, all of those prohibited items have to do with those who are on compensated time, and we've got a former governor who's sitting in, well, he's released now, but was in jail for that he used his employees, were on compensated time engaging in political activity, just to be clear, which governor, which jailed governor that is, that was George Ryan.
Right. He didn't have this policy in front of him.
Alderman Woods, did you have a question?
I did. Two.
One question?
An original and a follow-up.
And a follow-up, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Then we'll go back around if you have more.
This one's for the attorney. Of all the pages and all the words in this presentation, how, how many of these are new that don't exist already, state statute, code, state constitution, county code, civil rules of procedure, whatever, one of those things that you wanna address?
My livelihood, you mean, the law?
Exactly.
They all exist in the law currently.
Thank you. Why we had, why we had this? Well, don't look at me, he's trying to think.
Follow? Yes, Mr. Councilmembers?
I'll try to state it clear, perhaps, the goal was to pull all the already laws into one section of the code under the city council.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up?
I, I did.
It's too late.
I do.
Go ahead.
So, my, my follow-up is done to, to pull this in, because for some reason, we need to have a, have it written in another place, so I would say that we're throwing in the Whistleblower Act, right, so could we throw in the whole state statute, the state constitution, civil rules of procedure, the county code, the building, all of them, and create the document that you said we would create by, what was it, redeveloping the same thing? I can't remember.
I know the, in the past, there was some argument that there's a piece here and a piece there on this specific ordinance, and the direction and the goal here was to put it all under one roof, so this is really an ordinance that's been revised and rewritten with everything, both from a personnel point and an elected official, so there's a lot of things that the chief discussed that pertain specifically to employees, not council members. Then there were issues in there that pertain more to council members than it did employees. They have their own procedural manual, I don't believe the council members have their own procedural manual. This will be part of a procedural manual, so that what we are basically doing with this rewrite revision is setting a foundation for our future council members and elected officials, because why it's never been done in the past really had me scratching my head. So I think we're a more progressive council, and I think we all agree on transparency and accountability, and this is all under one roof. I have no follow-up, go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, and there are, it's, it's not unusual for there actually to be board manuals for boards, to be council manuals that are similar to the, the personnel policy, but it's just for board conduct, so what this does is it, without going into a laborious, you know, board, so you have to look before you come to a meeting to see what, you know, what you can and cannot do, this puts it all in one place, so it's quick to reference, and then for those things, for commenting on something, whether you knew if you could or you couldn't, this puts, makes it very clear you can't, so everybody's on the same page, you know what the conduct is, is prohibited, and thereby conduct which is permitted, that's not referenced, and so, and again, it's all under, your city code has a section for virtually each, there's a city manager section, there's a section for the mayor, there's a section for the alderman, so this would be one for specifically to the council, and some of the provisions of the personnel manual apply to the council, and some of them do not, so what this would be is, you'd have your very own, it would be specifically applicable to the city council.
All right, we're gonna go round two, I'm gonna start with Mr. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Again, I think we're protected by the state and state statute of what our rules are as elected officials, and I think that's good enough, I think by looking at this, some of it could be in violation of the Second Amendment, freedom of speech on some of the stuff, I won't go into details on it, and if this is passed, I'd like to know how the mayor is gonna do the advisory committee.
Who wants to take that question, so I won't have to start with the city manager?
I think the mayor already kinda mentioned that, and I think staff mentioned that as well, the advisory committee was a piece of information that the chief put in there as an option if we wanted to go down that path, that didn't, he didn't say that we were going down that path, I didn't think the mayor was, didn't sound like he was an advocate of that, I know Alderman E. Wesley is not an advocate, 'cause he would be Stop the Jewel the most with the Stop the Jewel comment, so I think that was just a possibility, more so, I think the highlight of the document was try to, as I stated, pull all, everything together, and maybe create an opportunity for some trainings, like Alderman Messina said, I know staff does trainings on sexual harassment, bullying, things like that, I, I don't, I'm not aware of the council being trained on that, I do know there's some state initiatives, I think, on that, so, things like that, but the ethics thing is an add-on, a piece of information that's a possibility.
And I don't think anyone is trying to take away our Second Amendment right, all we're trying to do is say, your First Amendment, yeah, seconds to the gun.
Gun?
The First Amendment, I think what we're trying to do is put it in a fashion that is orderly and professional and polite, to say it easily. Do you have a follow-up?
No.
All right, Alderman Jacob?
I guess I refer back to Alderman Woods' comments, we might as well put, you know, a thousand pages into this and bring all, you know, bring the state statute, define, I mean, again, this was talked about years ago, and it didn't go anywhere, I mean, I'm not sure why you weren't talking about this, to be honest.
Do you have a question why it didn't go anywhere years ago?
Because, as Alderman Woods said, I mean, there's already statutes, states, I mean, there's already statutes covering this stuff, why are we reinventing the wheel?
We're not, we're just putting a whole bicycle together with the wheel on the front and the wheel on the back, and the seat.
Isn't it gonna be a thousand pages?
It's not, doesn't need to be a thousand pages, we'll give you a Cliff Notes version. Do you have a follow-up to that? All right, mayor, you're next.
I don't wanna spend an hour and a half, like we did the last time on this stuff. When this came up, I said, listen, if we got stuff in different chapters, we're rewriting the rest of the code book, put everything into one chapter, and we can move forward. I don't think there's anything new here, correct? Is that my one question? Because I have another.
No, as long as you keep talking, it's the same question, don't stop talking.
Well.
Oh, you're done. All right, who wants to answer that question? Did you catch that question?
There's nothing new in here, correct? It's just we've taken out whatever chapters and made one chapter, is that?
There's some additions.
No, yeah, there are some additions, that was the, the possible additions that were talked about, sorry, not here, back in 2013, and that was these that dealt with appearance of conflict of interest, confidentiality of like executive session stuff, decorum, general decorum, the council member public comment and action, that stuff, some of this stuff isn't necessarily in state law, but it's some, some stuff that had come up in the past and was asked to be addressed back in, I think, 2013, and so this is drawing that stuff forward, too, as possible recommendations.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up, mayor?
Listen, all this stuff, I mean, if somebody's stepping on a line, all we can really do is censure, unless, of course, I don't think anybody up here is ridiculous enough to, you know, have a criminal offense of some kind, that, my question is to the staff, if one of the elected officials starts getting out of hand, how are you gonna, are you gonna report it to the council so we can censure? I mean, sometimes aldermen might get heated, and they should act with respect to the staff or any resident, how do we, because I hear things, but that never seems to come to this council, so, and we can put a stop to that nonsense.
I think this is one of the primary functions of this revision rewrite, so that there can be things addressed once they're complained. Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, I believe we have that power now, but we have to be told about it, and procedurally, Pat, how does, how does that get reported to us, and, and whatnot?
Well, it would be, if it's someone engaged in discussions with staff, they would report it to the city manager, then the city manager then would report it to the council. Well, hypothetically, let's say that someone was not a big fan of the airplane, given the planes fly over the city of Wooddale, and took whoever came up with that model airplane and took them to task over it, Alderman crushed it up and threw it back at them, and that would be then reported to, and I'm not saying anybody did, it's a hypothetical.
You're worried, I have a friend.
Yeah.
I actually made that contact, but I didn't.
Anyway, and then the city manager then would bring that, probably initially to the attention of the mayor, who would share that with the, with the council, and then the council would make a determination as to what, if any, action would be necessary to be taken. Well, you do have the, if you, and that's an interesting, the question was, is it done in, I don't know if that's another question that's permitted, but that's if you're allowed to, if you do it in open session or in closed session, and the, if you have the power to discipline under your code, and the law allows you, gives you that power, you can have that discussion in executive session, if you do not have the, the power in your code to discipline, then all of that takes place in open session. That having been said, you can have a discussion in closed session, but ultimately, if a censure is going to be the, is going to be the action that the council determines, that has to be done in open session.
Eugene Wesley, Alderman Wesley?
Hi, it's my first question, what is conflict of interest? So if, if someone meets with a engineer firm, one of council members, whoever it is, he can't vote on it, because that's a conflict of interest, he can't vote on that contract.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, no, that's not true, you can meet with them, you can discuss it, if that, you had a relationship that you had with that engineering firm that you brought to and gave them some type of special treatment, that would be considered a conflict of interest. Simply have an interaction with a, with a vendor, whether it's an engineering firm or, or any other vendor or company that does business with the city is not a conflict of interest.
You have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
No, I'll wait to my third round of questions.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. First, I do applaud you for taking this up, so I'm not against it, I'm against the format and what's, what it's including, I don't like to rewrite something that's already written, we change one word, one comma, you know, capitalize another word, and all of a sudden, there's a different meeting, and we gotta filter it through three documents. If you wanted to reference those documents, I'm okay with that, but I don't wanna rewrite them, you know, why don't we throw Robert's Rules of Order in there? I mean, we'd have issues all night long, 'cause nobody really follows that, I mean, that's, that's part of it, too, that's part of it whether you know it or not, so if you wanna reference all of those documents, and then, just tell me what you're adding, that was my first question to Pat, what's new, what doesn't exist anywhere else? And, and if the thing is to say, nobody knows about them, then put the references, you're, you're guided by state statute, by Illinois Constitution, by, 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 by city code, by whatever, whatever those references are.
Any comments?
No, I, I do have just a little follow-up, I found the, because there was some further definition in the supporting documents of what would be considered avoiding an appearance of conflict of interest, and it specifically says, if there is a benefit, the council member shall nevertheless, before the council's taking up the matter, announce that the, the action by council will result in a pecuniary or other material benefit to an immediate family, partner in interest, friend of the council member, or person whom the council member has a regular acquaintance, but the member believes that such benefit is outweighed by the benefit to the city and its residents. So, as long as there's disclosure, say, you know, your best friend owns a business in town, and the city wants to do business with them, but they make the best doors in the whole world, you just disclose it, council can still vote on it, and you could also seek the guidance of, if there was an ethics advisor, say, is this okay? But there just has to be disclosure, similar to the recent property purchase, that I believe the city made a disclosure, that someone on a board does have a property interest in it, but the city has a material benefit for purchasing this property, so, there's just transparency and disclosure with that, it doesn't mean you can't do it or can't vote on it.
Alderman Messino?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple comments, I'll just keep talking straight through, so I don't miss this, to add on to Alderman Woods' piece about rewrite, yeah, I don't think a rewrite's necessary, I really, really like the idea of an ethics advisor, and I just think, back to Alderman Roy West's point way, 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 way back, a couple, couple scenarios you guys have just mentioned, between the bullying, and then there was another one of like friendships that was in there, is very subjective, and you talked about a scenario, Attorney Bond, about someone comes in and demands that, well then, we might as well put the cuffs on my boss, 'cause I get that every day, if I was in a public setting, I mean, how, how do you dictate someone's with, someone's tolerance, it's, it's just not fair, it's very subjective, my tolerance to bullying is a lot higher than somebody else's tolerance, and to me, I just feel like it opens it up to so much subjectivity that, I'm sorry, just like, and no offense to the mayor, I don't want him picking the board members, that's subjectivity, and he doesn't either, to me, I just want this black and white, and, and if you open it up to this gray area, we're gonna cause more. we're gonna cause more problems than good. That's what I'm scared about. I get the intention. I would ask that the ethics advisor be a strong consideration to this. If this content exists, maybe your additions that you're proposing, why don't we just do that as a best practice? There's no formality. Call it a best practice. Call it a business conduct guideline like we call it at work. And maybe it's, it's there, but to spend all this staff time and all this, you might as well just hire an ethics advisor. It's all pre-existing and that's what we pay them for. And then we use those as best practices. That, that's it.
Good point. Very good point. Mayor, whoops.
Could I ask the chairman a question?
Sure.
So, going back to my original question to Attorney Bond, what's original? And I think when you pointed out that there were like four slides in there, four or five, that were things that you're adding that are embellishments maybe of, of other stuff and, and kind of some...
They were labeled possible additions.
Guidance or best practices, as Alderman Messina would say. Can we, can we focus on those? And that's what I'm saying. So I don't care that we reference and say, see also state statute, see also state, I mean, whatever, if you want to put that in there. But really just focus on the, the four slides or the best practices. Is that, Chairman, is that?
That was our goal, basically, to have our own personnel manual as a best practice model. And to keep it all under one roof, we thought we were to keep it. And what we could do is, uh, we could amend this, maybe relabel it and put these possible additions into the best practices of this one ordinance. I mean, this was the kick it around tonight, basically. Alderman, did you have anything else right now?
No, I, I'm good.
Alderman Catalano?
How was the, when an elected official, official has, collects campaign contributions and then the, uh, the company is up in front of the, the council asking for whatever he's asking for, how's that addressed in this, um, ordinance?
Mr. Bond will answer that.
Yeah, the state statute currently allows elected officials to take contributions and it is publicly reported. So there's a record of that. There's not a requirement that you publicly disclose. You certainly can, you're just not obligated to, um, because that was one of the, uh, the exemptions to that is if it's a, if it's a permitted, uh, under the Illinois election code and campaign contributions are provided, any campaign contribution made in excess of $150 is reported and recorded by the candidate or the candidate's committee. So it's, there's already a record. The whole purpose of this is public disclosure and there's already been a public disclosure of that campaign contribution.
I, I understand that, but when the, uh, the person making that contribution is, is in front of council and he wants what he wants, that person that accepted the contribution, should he be voting on that or should he, uh? Go ahead.
Yeah, you're legally entitled to vote on that. By, by, under Illinois law and under federal law, you read, you are legally entitled to vote on it. You don't need to recuse yourself. Again, if you wish to recuse yourself, you can. That's your, your prerogative. Uh, you can do that on any issue, but it's not, uh, there's not a direct pecuniary gain, even though you're receiving money in connection with a protected First Amendment speech to receive political contributions. It's a, it's a protected activity. And the reason you don't have to recuse yourself is because there is the, the disclosure requirement that already exists in the law. So there's a record of that contribution having been made. Now, the, the flip side is if you did, you received it, you didn't report it and you voted in favor of it, now you are in violation of the code. So, I mean, one of the things you can do at this juncture is if you say, it's a good idea, you know, we don't want to have your, your, your code, you know, on this particular, that thick. Add some of the suggested items, make a notice to those things that are new. Come back to the, uh, to the committee or council with it all in one place and, and references to where instead of incorporating city code or state statute on bullying, for example, have a definition as further provided for in state code, maybe a citation. Add those couple of, uh, a couple of items that are, you know, recommended for decorum and so on and so forth. It sounds like there is not a great deal of interest in moving forward with the Ethics Commission. I don't know about the Ethics Advisor. Present that and then you can, you know, wade through and have those that are identified as new, those that are identified as the suggested. And the other ones, again, it's just a compilation of those into one, uh, location for, and maybe incorporate the training aspect at one location. So readily available if anyone wishes to inquire to what the, the activity is prohibited. Any council member now or in the future.
One second, let me get this orange pen out of my face. Alderman Jacob?
Just a comment on, just a comment on what Alderman Catalano was talking about. I mean, if we went into the, what you were talking about, every single state representative, every single state senator, every single, I mean, any large political figure can't vote on anything because they all receive contribute. I mean, there's, there's no person that I know of except for maybe a Donald Trump that uses his own money for his campaign. Most people collect donations and get donations. That's how they run their campaigns.
I don't.
State representatives, every single state representative does.
I think what Alderman Catalano was referring to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we were to take, uh, political contribution from someone in town and now someone in town had an issue coming up and now we who accepted their contribution decide to start lobbying each council member for a yes vote to benefit them, that may be somewhat of a conflict.
Yeah, it's legal. That's the problem.
So be it.
It's a state problem. It's not.
Good.
It's not ethical though.
No, that's the, sometimes legal and ethical is a fine line on that. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, that's why there's only one book, uh, the Bible, and there's many books of the statutes. So they are different. But again, those are the things and we could certainly make reference to that in the, uh, in the code of those. But, you know, we're not going to, I don't think the goal is to reiterate every single, uh, every single item just to simply, again, consolidate it. The state did, uh, Illinois compiled statutes where they took all these different areas, compiled them. So you've got a municipal code, you've got a park code, you've got a fire code, you've got all these different codes. So that's all we're doing is, is, is at the direction of the committee and, and the chair was to put these in. So we've got a code regulating the, uh, or identifying what kind of conduct is, is prohibited for council members.
Alderman Messina.
Just a quick note, could we provide direction for them to look into pricing for that ethics advisor? Would we need a motion to do that or could we provide direction? Or is there any interest? I mean, how's that work?
Mr. Bond?
I could tell you, we do it in other, other municipalities and other entities. It's, a lot of times it's a retired judge. They charge an hourly rate. It varies from $150 an hour to $350 an hour depending on who you, who you retain or engage for that position and it depends on how many times they get called. So, you know, it's...
Per use.
That's the, kind of the range and you, you know, you could budget for it and say, this is the extent of what we're gonna put in, uh, for that, uh, budget item. But that's roughly the, uh, you know, the range you're going to be paying.
Mayor?
Before we go into all that stuff, again, there's nobody up here causing or creating any criminal acts. But we get calls all the time from the residents and sometimes I'm sure it's a friend or something. It's, of course, your opportunity. Okay, you'll find out what the issues are. You go to the staff. Staff should be treated properly, ask the questions, not telling them what they should or shouldn't do. And if we have an elected official doing that, coming in saying, you should have done this, you talk to the finance director or the manager or the police department or community development and tell them, you gotta do this because, you know, he was not treated correctly and you didn't do the right thing and you're harping on them. You, you're allowed to ask the questions and believe me, I've had many people call me and after I get the answers, I call them back and say, so you didn't get a permit? Well, Nunes, uh, you know, I was going to, but I go, and that's when I tell them, I'm sorry, you have to follow the rules. Now, we're not gonna do anything spectacular by getting this ethics officer. If you want it, great, no problem. But I think we should be allowed to bring it in the back if we have a problem because personally, I don't want any, any of our staff compiling a file so they can at some point sue us personally. Bring it in the back, we have a discussion. The aldermen will be allowed or myself even, whatever, whoever, to defend themselves or say what the position is or whatever the deal is. We're not, all it is is, you can do is censure, that's it. So this is specifically for the council, my understanding, right? And rewriting this code, putting it all together, talking about it for an hour and a half and we still in the same spot, can we have the discussion in the back? That's a simple question for Mr. Bond. What do we need to do? So if something comes up, I mean, I can give you a couple hypotheticals, but we don't need that.
No more hypotheticals. Let's get this thing moving. Mr. Messina?
No, I'm good.
Alderman, you're good? Mr. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, let's make the motion to amend the state official and employ the Ethics Art Act ordinance. That's my motion.
What?
Do I have a second?
I don't understand.
Gonna pass this, right?
Oh, you wanna make a motion and pass it?
No, 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 no. Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may. If there was a motion, put out there.
If you're making the motion, are you motion, the way it is? Because it has that, where I have to pick three residents.
No, it's an option. They can take that out if you want. It was an option, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just...
It was an option.
It was written as an option, I think.
I think we have decided that it would not be in the best interest of, uh, the city to have anybody on a commission that's a part of the city because we want to put principles before personalities. So if people have no knowledge of the city or any of the individuals involved in the city, they could be far more objective than perhaps a resident who, who knows what. So, yeah, and the mayor appointing people, the chief and I had discussed this, Mr. Bond had discussed this. And I know, uh, Mayor, you've voiced your opinion on that. That certainly would not be part of this program. Alderman, uh, Messina.
Just a quick question. Um, I mean, I remembered my question. So when we were talking about someone going in and questioning personnel things that were made, right? That is allowed, is that allowed simply with Jeff? Because we simply are responsible to hire and fire and discipline Jeff? But if I, if I understand correctly, we, will you cross the line is when you start going into his employees? Is that accurate?
There's a hierarchy. I think we've all been taught that when we came on board.
Right.
But since we don't have that procedural manual, it's easy to forget.
Okay.
Mayor, did you want to add to that?
Very simple. So somebody's getting billed something and goes to the finance director, right? Finance, if you go to the finance director and tell them, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? How about whoever, Mr. Wilson, what's the issue here? So I, I know the story. Not do this, do that. And then call the manager, Mr. Wilson's not doing this, he's not doing that, you're not doing your job. You should be on top of him. That's a different story. That's what we're talking about. That's it.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman?
Yeah, I do. Because again, it goes back to subject, subjectivity. I won't pick anybody, forget it. I won't even say anybody, but this person doesn't like me, this staff member. They suddenly say, you know what, Randy, you know, Randy said this, right? Actually Randy said this, 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 this and this. And then all of a sudden I'm being questioned and I'm in the back room being questioned because of the subjectivity. Again, I, I understand the objective here and I've always led with, if I got a problem with staff, I'm going to Jeff because that's their boss. He's the CEO. I go to Jeff, we're the board of directors, he's our CEO. We hire and fire. That's your job to do. I understand that part, but I don't, I don't think that it's right for us to dictate that conversation. I just don't because it's a very subjective. Somebody doesn't like me, they can just say, Randy said this. Or they can mistake what I said. Or I could come off an eight-hour flight like I have and probably rip someone's head off. Didn't mean to, but could do that. And then, right, then, then here I am being, facing that. I know better to go to Jeff. But I just feel like it just, it just opens up a whole new area of somebody misconstruing what I'm saying and making something up just because I've given them a hard time in the past.
Well, you know, maybe not realizing the full impact of this, uh, ordinance, there is in the personnel manual, which will certainly include in the elected officials manual, a complaint, a written complaint that is, has to be filed in a certain amount of time, that has to be reviewed so that there's no frivolous accusations or subjectivity thrown into a complaint. And I think we could kind of just put city, uh, employees and elected officials next to that, uh, part about the one year or whatever. I don't have every one of them memorized, but there was that time slot.
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, up to a year.
Up to a year, right. But it was written, a written complaint. So you'll know in a written complaint if it's frivolous or not. And with that, that could be a deterrent from people that just want to start barking over a personality conflict.
Well, certainly, uh, like there's certain procedures if someone wants to file a assist complaint against the police officer, that they have to file out a sworn affidavit, um, that'll open an internal investigation. You could also have part of the policy that if an employee has an issue, they would have to file a written notice or if it's through an email form or whatever it is that this has happened. Certainly if they lie about that and it's determined that they lied about it, they're gonna face,
slander and libel.
Up to and including discharge for, for lying about, you know, about a situation too, so.
Just give them the game, I'm good.
Right.
Just want some skin in the game for the person putting it in, right?
Sure.
Yeah, if I'm gonna, if they're gonna do that, then an affidavit would be great because then I, then I'm gonna think twice about making this claim, finding out you're gonna investigate. That's cool. Good with that.
That's in there now. We're gonna move, or just add city officials hopefully to that sort of a timeframe and what it takes to a written complaint, what it's made up. Alderman Woods?
I mean, we've all discussed a lot of different things. I think we all want some changes to this. Can, can we direct staff to, to, I mean, Jeff, if you've written down, chief, between the, the three of you, you kind of understand the general idea of what we're trying to get to and take out the, the parts that reference the commission? And really pare it down and do the reference thing we talked about so it isn't as wordy. I just dislike when you have to filter one document who's, which is really similar to the other one and filter them through and then determine which one's the overriding document. And you just waste a lot of time and, and energy doing that.
And, and I was gonna say, in compiling this, we didn't want to spend a lot of time and money composing the final ordinance, how it would look based on this direction. We can come up with a recommended ordinance and bring it back to council for then, but...
If that pleases the, the, the chairman and the motioner.
Yeah.
So that's my motion then.
And what was the motion?
Second.
Alderman?
It was actually giving, giving staff, the, the city attorney, the chief and the city manager direction to revise, revise based on the conversation that we had here today.
There was already, there was already a motion on the table though.
But nobody seconded it.
I don't think nobody gave them a second. They started talking. I don't think anybody gave them a chance to say what they were saying.
Well, there is a motion on the floor. Alderman Catalano made a motion to approve, as written with a caveat regarding taking the mayor out as far as the, uh...
Yeah, I'll amend it.
I referenced it. Tony's, Alderman Catalano's first motion.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes.
To what?
To Art Woods' warning to take out the ethics part, the, not...
It was his motion.
Take out the, um...
Commission.
The commission, right. Allowance staff, right.
Whatever he said.
Streamline it.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a question or you just?
Yeah, I have one question.
One question, Alderman.
If I have a problem with the city manager, if I want a complaint with it...
If I have a problem with the city manager filing a complaint with, where, who does the coach, coach manager have? HR?
Yes, sir, Mr. Manager.
I didn't, I didn't hear that question. I was gonna go back to the previous question, and I was gonna recommend, a lot of times a committee, when we have these initial discussions, we don't really even do a motion. We kind of get the consensus of the council from some direction of what was discussed, and then we come back and take a stab at it with a more fine-tuned approach now that we've heard the input. So I believe that the Senate would come back to a committee with some of the input taken today, and then discuss it again before any formalized motions are made.
I kind of like that better than the motions, just giving staff direction.
That is what I...
Okay.
That, that was what I said.
Is that what's said down there?
If it was agreeable to the original motioner and the...
So he agreed, it was seconded. The motion was...
Direction, direction.
Okay. Okay, then.
I would love to see, I lean...
Direction of what?
We don't need a roll call on that. Any items to be considered at future meetings? Here's where I get everybody's attention. Any motion for adjournment? Second, third, fourth?
Fifth.
Would you really? Go ahead, go talk to yourself. Meeting's adjourned.